You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay, welcome. We'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for March 4th, 2020 to order. Item one, to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes February 5th, 2020. There are packets, I put those forward in a form of a motion.
I'll move it.
All right, any changes, edits, discussion, hearing? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item two, to consider and if appropriate, approve a recommendation from John Heffery, Town Engineer, to accept Cosgrove Court as town road. This item will be referred to RTM for Legislative Approval.
So, Cosgrove Court is off of Todd's Hill Road, right up the street here. The developer had developed the road, actually inspected by me when I was the Assistant Town Engineer, subsequently inspected by the current Town Engineer, sorry, Assistant Town Engineer. I've also taken a look at it. The Planning and Zoning Department has looked at the improvements, making sure that all the street lights are in place, to their satisfaction. So, at this point, we're recommending to accept the road.
Okay, thank you. And also, just for the record, despite the name, there's no connection with myself and the position or with this development. All right, so with that, I'll put it forward in a form of a motion.
I'll move it. Just, how many more roads do you think we have right now, roughly, that still need to be accepted by the Town? There were somewhere, I think I sent you that list, about six or seven roads that still like the need legal opinion. There's been some research by the, my predecessor to the Assistant Town Engineer position, looking at those roads, however, there hasn't been any, any progress on the legal side of things. I'm not sure that the money was there to really pursue those road acquisitions, so... Okay, 'cause that's certainly something that started a long time ago and it still seems to be dragging on, so... Since Steve Dodd laid back, yeah. Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, so it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item three, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from John Heffery, Town Engineer, to approve a sanitary sewer easement and subordination agreement for the property located at 497 East Main Street. This item will be referred to the RTM for Legislative Approval as well.
497 East Main Street is currently under contract. The seller had to enter into environmental land use restriction through the DEP in order to sell this property. There's some contamination in the back part of the property. There's an existing sanitary sewer that predates, I don't know if actually predates the contamination back there. In order for the seller to sell the property, to transfer the property, DEP is requiring this environmental land use restriction. We've kind of taken this opportunity, the DEP has come to us asking for a subordination agreement. Thank you. On this, for this sewer here, they believe that there was a sewer easement there, which did not happen to be the case. That sewer is there without the benefit of easement, like a lot of parts in town. We're taking this opportunity to acquire an easement from the property owners at this point in time, and then we would have to enter into the subordination agreement, subordinating to that DEP environmental land use restriction. So, there was some remediation done in the back part of the property where the contamination was. They removed the top three feet of soil, replaced that with clean fill. However, our sewer is about seven or eight feet deep. If we were ever to go into, whether we'd have this, you know, whether you guys approved the easement and the subordination agreement or not, we would still be responsible for what we did with the contaminated soil if we ever had to dig up that sewer. So, we would still have to take those steps as the responsible party to remove that contaminated soil and dispose of it properly. Again, we're kind of taking this opportunity to gain an easement that we didn't have before, so we can get that easement in place and on the land records. We had the treatment plant go out there and videotape the line. The line is a PVC plastic line. There's one lateral entering into the main on that section. The latter looks to be in good shape. I think worst-case scenario is we continue to monitor that line, and you can, we can put in a liner in that line, which would essentially revive the life of that sewer for another hundred years, so I'd recommend that you would consider and approve this easement and subordination agreement. There's no, there's no exposure to the Town by doing this, it's just a right-of-way? Right, we would be gaining the easement and we would be putting it on the land records that, yes, you know, we recognize that there's a land use restriction. We would take those proper steps to register with the DEP if we had to enter into that easement. Which old site is, is this the old Chemical Lehman site? Which site is this? I believe this is behind the old, was it a, some sort of store?
Between, is this the area between...
Just west.
Pets Club and the trailer park where the gas station used to be, but there's the property in the back of that?
Yes, I'm familiar with that. All right, thanks. I'm good.
That answers my question. I was just wondering where the property is located.
Okay.
If that's that parcel that had been contaminated for quite some time behind the trailer park down through...
Yeah, remember they capped it over a few years ago, so they never...
So, that's that whole piece in there?
Yes.
So, that services the front section, or does that service in the industrial park?
The sewer itself?
Yes.
Sewer services Paveway, which is the Mobile Home Park up on Leith Island, Shoreline Mobile Home Park as well, and that travels through to the Pets Club and enters into the system of business property.
Business park, okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, so...
I'll move it.
Moved the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item four, to consider, well, attorney's not here right now, perhaps we can just go right into, we'll give him a few more minutes. If not, we could still do that one. Let's go to, skip to item five, to consider and if appropriate, approve the purchase and acquisition of Seventeen Creek Court by the Town. John do a presentation on this item. This item has also been sent to Planning and Zoning, it will be heard Thursday for an H-24 referral, as well, it's in RTM now, and so we'll delay any vote on this tonight until after...
Okay, 'cause I have other questions I would like to bring up with you at some point in time.
Yeah, so we can hear the presentation. If there's any discussion or questions, we'll approach now if something should come up in the meantime, we can forward those questions. All right, John?
Sure. So, we're proposing to acquire Seventeen Creek Court as a means of floodplain administering. This is in the Waverly Park area. If you take Sybil Creek down, past Lenny's, you come around the bend on Lime Wood. Waverly Road is, I think, the second road on your left. You take that up and it, right up against Sybil Creek. Creek Court is a private road. This area is below the coastal jurisdiction line, pretty much the entire area around that creek, which is around, the ground elevation's only about, you know, elevation two. However, it's in a FEMA flood zone, the 100-year flood zone of elevation 12. Just giving you an idea of where it, where it kind of stands. Some backstory, this property was substantially damaged in 2012 in Sandy, meaning that any, the damage sustained was amounted to a greater amount than 50% of its, the structure's appraised value. Once that is triggered, and that was filed on the land records, that owner is required to bring that building into FEMA flood compliance and local ordinance compliance before they could do any real work. They would have to show that they were going to bring it into compliance. That property was foreclosed by City Mortgage in 2014, and subsequently bought by another, was bought by a property owner in 2015. That was then foreclosed in November of 2019, and that new owner, the current owner, came to the Building Department, the Land Use Department, for a permit to remove a shed and remove part of the back roof over the deck of Seventeen Creek Court. That's when I was made aware, and made them aware, that substantial damage, substantial damage claim was filed on land records. They're not allowed to do any work on the property whatsoever unless they, they bring it back into compliance. I believe it was around that time that, you know, they had offered to sell the property to the Town for, I believe it was $125,000. The appraisal came back right at $125,000. In that packet of information I gave you, you could see the, in Sandy, that there was about 31 inches of water from the ground level up on the house, based on the mud level, during the initial assessment, damage assessment. Again, the, the elevation, the FEMA elevation is around 12, so to be able to get this house into compliance, you would have to raise it up about nine feet. There's another picture in that pack that I gave you of a house around the corner that elevated to about 15 feet above ground level in order to get to the 500-year floodplain elevation, which is required under federal funding. So, that's kind of what we'd be looking at in this neighborhood if everyone were going to raise up. Acquiring properties, demolishing the building, and creating more of an open green space is one of the tools we have in floodplain mitigation. You create that buffer where that salt marsh can kind of reestablish itself and be a natural buffer to these storms. Also, would probably boost the values of the surrounding properties of this, this house, and some of the other ones have kind of fallen into disrepair since they do have that, as opposed to substantial damage, there's a substantial improvement kind of in our ordinance that, very similar, they can spend up to about 50% of the value of the structure before they would have to bring it up into compliance. So, a lot of these properties just simply haven't improved the, the house because they don't, they don't have that, that room to kind of make it work based on the values of the properties. This falls in line with, again, the Coastal Resiliency Plan of 2016. In the POCD, they do have, you know, their goals are promoting resilience, conservation of natural resources, and accounting for sea level rise within the POCD. This also, I feel, meets those goals of the Planning and Zoning Department. The, obviously, I've received a bunch of pushback on this item, probably because of the fact that there's a pending lawsuit. In any way, does the Town's purchasing this piece of property at this particular time, does it negate that lawsuit? And, I mean, there seems to be a lot of stuff that's going on right now that's attached to this, that you may not know about, nor should you have to, you know, you're doing your part. There's just a lot of stuff in the background that I think before this even is considered that needs to be looked at. There's just a lot of questions, and I just learned about some of this stuff recently, so I haven't even had a chance to sit down with the Selectmen to discuss it yet. So, I'm glad to hear that we're going to table this thing this evening, not table it, just re-refer it, I hope, and so those things can come to light.
With respect to the lawsuit that came up, there's a, it's important to consider that we have an offer from the legal owner of the property. The lawsuit doesn't pertain to, the Town is being defended by its insurance carrier right now, Howd Ludorf is representing the Town in those claims. So, I don't see how the, the purchase, the acquisition of this property, which is, again, as the Town Engineer articulated, is in line with our Coastal Resiliency Plan, our Plan of Conservation Development, is related to these claims that are being brought on by a previous owner of the property. There were a number of claims, but however, you know, they initially centered around the fact with the Board of Assessment Appeals. Essentially, they adjusted the value of the property, of a property that he does not own. So, we are being represented by, as I mentioned, Howd Ludorf. There is one claim, I believe, which is a minor issue, that is, but Tom Gerard of Howd Ludorf said they would defend the Town in that sense. It's all tied in with multiple other claims that this, this individual brought against the current owner and against the Town as well. I would also just, would ask the Town Engineer to confirm one fact, because this was in, is before RTM Now, it was heard by Admin Services last night, as well, tonight it will go to, well, I think the intent is to re-refer it, but it is also going to Ways and Means. But a question came up in terms, why is this property different than other properties? Being a coastal town, we know a number of our properties are within the 100 and certainly the 500-year floodplain. However, this really is where it's close proximity, the low, low line elevation of this, which is below the coastal jurisdiction line, which I believe, other than this area, there's probably less than a half dozen throughout Town.
Yeah, we did, we did have that question last night, and I did look into it today. So, the coastal jurisdiction, jurisdiction line, for those who don't know, that's where the DEP takes jurisdiction. They're considered basically people's trust, you know, it's state land technically. So, I looked around, just a quick search around in our GIS based on, on the coastal jurisdiction line. There's, there's only about four structures outside this area that are below the coastal jurisdiction line, and 21 in this area between Creek Crouch and Waverly Park. I think that's why, you know, when, when our consultants were formulating the Coastal Resilience Plan, you know, they really focused on this area, and acquisitions were a part of their kind of solution to, to the resilience of this area. We have that, the Waverly Park Bridge that, I couldn't tell you how many homes, but if you continue further up, there's a bridge that goes over the Sybil Creek there, and there are dozens of homes up in that area. You know, if you're looking to the current models for sea level rise, things like that, that bridge is going to, well, the approaches to that bridge will be underwater on a, on a daily basis with tide cycles. This, this kind of also brings into that resilience where if we can acquire some particular properties, this being one of them, being the low-lying areas, you have that opportunity then to raise the road and be able to gain access to those other dozens of properties, excuse me. Without that, we'd, we'd essentially be stuck with either having to take some properties to be able to reconfigure that bridge and gain access, or abandon those, those properties and try to find a different means of access. Well, there isn't a means of access, only at the top of that road. It just goes back to the back of the old landfill. Yeah, there's a paper road that comes back. I mean, I'm just saying, in an emergency, we certainly have some...
Want to pull the cap off the landfill?
Let's go. No, drive right at the top.
See, that costs better than ours.
Yeah, good. But it all kind of comes into play with the resilience of, especially this area, and why, why the, you know, the consultants and the public at large that gave their input into the, the plan kind of thought about these acquisitions, and I think if we'd come up with a, with a way to, you know, have a voluntary program where we can start to look at particularly this area, maybe some other areas, but to try and make sure we can continue access to other areas of Town where we wouldn't have that ability otherwise. Well, fortunately, we now have the Resiliency Group that's together, so I think one of the things that unfortunately happened, just because of logistics, is it went to some other committees before it came here, just the way it worked out. I think if the flow had gone differently, maybe some of this stuff came, could have come out and maybe solved some of the questions earlier, so in the future. We went to the Board of Finance, and you and I didn't even have a chance to talk about it, just because there was no meetings. So, it's kind of like backwards.
Yeah, no, it's not really backwards. You have to consider each, each body has a different role within the process, and really the Board of Finance role is really just funding and securing funding in terms of the acquisition, approval of acquisitions. That comes before this body in the RTM where it is now, so it's, it's not going out of order, it's ensuring that, because the way the meeting schedule falls too, that there's a funding in place. However, their, their, the Board of Finance role is really to appropriate and authorize the use of funds. This body, the RTM, is authorizing and approving the, the acquisition of property. So, they're, they're really different in the RTM actually, as the dual responsibility, if you really think about it.
Oh, I certainly understand that.
One other comment, if you're just, and I think we do have a question, but just, because the Town Engineer made a comment, he referred to as, the property acquisition is, you know, a tool in the toolbox or meter coastal resiliency goals. There's really the hardening, the green infrastructure, and property acquisitions. And, you know, there's, there's appropriate measures that you take depending on the area, the circumstances, and which, which is feasible to really accomplish. I think, which was identified, again, getting back by our consultant in 2016, property acquisitions was appropriate in this particular area because of the properties that fell in this very, very low-lying area, which are going to be increasingly impacted through the, even just normal tide cycles. Other thing that came out, pointed this discussion is about, you know, exploring hard infrastructure in terms of where, through Sybil Creek. Now, there's a tide gate there which controls the tide, but the state is, there's no interest to the state, and that is state infrastructure to build a flood control system or in that area. Quite honestly, there's little support really there to even maintain a tide gate. But when you talk about controlling for future storm events, you know, that's not what that existing tide gate is, nor does the state, through our conversations with both DOT and DEP, EEP, to put in a flood control system there. I mean, that's what's been expressed to us. With that said, you have a question?
Yes. Number one, I'd be interested into why the urgency to do this one property, considering the fact that John's brought up, you have multiples, which sounds like, if I do my math, it sounds like you've got approximately 20 properties that could be issued. It would seem to make more sense if you were going to be doing it in a resiliency standpoint. The thing to do would be to look at it as a larger, a much larger process. If you're going to be acquiring properties and the rest, look at the much larger map instead of doing them one at a time. I mean, is there a rush to do this one at this point? Is that house inhabited at this point right now?
That's the, that house, I don't believe is in shape to be inhabited. I don't, I don't think it would be decode to be inhabited because of the substantial damage. And we do have...
That was never remediated from Sandy?
Nobody had ever come forth with a plan to raise that structure or bring it into compliance.
So, there's, in essence, there's little urgency to have to run after this, write this for an example?
I think to answer your question directly is terms of why now, why this particular property? It's because, again, keep in mind that this area, and you're correct, it's probably in the area of 21 homes is, from a quick glance on our map, that fall below the coastal jurisdiction line as this property does, in that right area. Because there is an opportunity right now. That's why we, so we, when we were approached and we saw that there's, or learned that there's an opportunity to acquire this, and we thought, you know, since it's, again, not to be redundant, but going back to our Coastal Resiliency Plan, the POCD, we thought we should then bring this opportunity forward to the appropriate bodies to pursue acquiring it. And to your question about a larger project, there is potential funding through FEMA, but that will not be probably reopened for another year, and that has to be a voluntary program, so essentially, and we think that as this, as an opportunity to engage and do outreach to the neighborhood, that there potentially is funding, and if they're willing to explore this and, again, have that, submit the application to FEMA with the Town, which I think there's maybe two funding, but I know one is 90-10, correct, John?
I believe this would be 75-25.
75-25, and I believe there is another 90-10, but anyway, 75-25, we'll use that conservatively. Reimbursement, 25 local share, 75 by federal dollars. So, it was, no more than, this was presented to us, there's an offer there, and rather than seeing this opportunity slip by and then in a year, two years, I were nowhere closer to implementing our plan, our Coastal Resiliency Plan or achieving any goals, we thought this was a good starting point.
How do you value a property that's sold for between 50 and 60,000, that now cannot be inhabited and is in a flood zone? It's a postage-stamped parcel of property, and you're paying top dollar for it. How do you come up with that?
We had a, an appraisal, the Town engaged in an appraiser to do a fair market value on the property. And that's the number that came in, 125,000.
And if I could just address the, the 21 properties that are in the, you know, the Creek Court, Crouch, Waverly Park area, that's just a count of, of the properties that are in there. We're not currently looking at acquiring all 21 properties. That would come in more of a comprehensive plan that we would work with the Coastal Vulnerability Group to come up with and what would be appropriate in that area to, to start, you know, engaging with those, those homeowners on a voluntary basis.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to say one thing, just for clarity. I, I know how the system works. I wasn't going against you on the system. However, because of the way it went, and it went to the Board of Finance, subcommittees picked it up, and they were actually boning on stuff before we did. And that was my concern, because what if they all said yes, and then we said no? That seems kind of foolish. Not saying that's going to happen, but that's, that's what I was trying to say. That's really not the way it should probably flow, just for clarity.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thanks, John. We'll take this up, again, we'll be Planning and Zoning this week for H-24.
So, do we have to re-refer this?
No action on it, and then we'll just take it up next time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. John, you want to just stick around in case there's any questions regarding Crescent Bluff? We'll just go to, back to number four, to consider and if appropriate, approve the purchase and acquisition and acceptance of Crescent Bluff Avenue and associated drainage easement by the Town. This item will be referred to the RTM for Legislative Approval, as well as, this is an H-24 referral as well, actually, all these land items are. So, as you know, the Crescent Bluff has been, Avenue has been a longstanding issue, just to kind of, though it's gone on for decades, just to kind of give a reminder, there was a lawsuit brought forward, which the Town was then pulled into, you know, challenging the status of the road, whether it was a private road or a town road. The Town did not prevail in the case that it was a town road. We had then, where, then there was a change in administration. We were going to appeal that decision, however, we had to wait. There were three counts that were being heard as part of that trial, there was, and we, the judge said we had to wait for the other two counts to be, a decision on those prior to, or before we could bring our appeal forward. So, while the years passed, although we didn't have to be actively involved in that, we were still involved to some degree in monitoring the cases, the status of it, responding to meetings called by the courts. So, there has been an ongoing expense on, on that side. And then there was a petition case brought against the Town, against the Board of Selectmen, which was, my understanding, a very seldom-used state statute, requiring the Town to lay out a public road over Crescent Bluff and down through the water. We had then began the condemnation process on the property, and, which was voted on by the Board of Selectmen, and then went to Planning and Zoning for an H-24 referral. During the discussions at the Planning and Zoning, the, the property owner had stated that they had, would be willing to sell the, the road, the full width of the right-of-way from Pine Orchard Road down to the end of the cul-de-sac and provide... they had, would be willing to sell the road, the full width of the right-of-way from Pine Orchard Road down to the end of the cul-de-sac and provide a drainage easement over the lawn area. We did enter into discussions, and I believe I did brief, Selectmen Dunbar at the time was representative on the RTM about those discussions, so you're aware of that was going on. However, there was still the issue, we wanted to be sure that this kind of, everything went to bed in terms of, put everything to bed in terms of the interior lot owners, the waterfront owner, as well as the association who has had claims as well that they were making. So we're, we started to look at, both trials were getting ready to start actually. In the petition case, there were some hearings held here by a panel that was put together by the judge presiding in that case, and the trial for the other case, the Wheeler Beechcroft case, was set to start, in which we would have to be actively engaged in that. Just prior to the start of those trials, we were able to come to a resolution for the acquisition of, as I said, the full width of the right-of-way down to the end of the cul-de-sac and the drainage easement in the amount of $200,000. We did have an appraisal done, which came in at about 100 and, just over 100,000, I would say 101,000, and the property owner had an appraisal come in at, I believe it was over 600,000. So there was a, you know, quite a spread there, and we did meet with the appraisers and, you know, it was a different, reviewing both, I guess you can say that there was a different methodology used to come up with such a variance. However, like I said, the offer was through negotiations by, that the town would acquire those parcels and the easement in the amount of 200,000. With that said, you know, evaluating what even our appraisal comes in at, the potential ongoing legal costs and the uncertainty of what may happen or how long this would continue to extend, I feel it's in the interest of the town to acquire the property for this amount. So that's what is before us.
Do we have, did I miss it in here? Was there anything in here on that? The agreement, anything? I know the attorney's not here tonight.
Yeah, no, again, this was, the attorney, for some reason, isn't here. We do not have an actual, it's all been submitted into the courts.
Okay.
You know, as we sat down and you and I had talked, and over the limits going down to the end of the cul-de-sac and the drainage easement, and again, we can couch it if you, approval pending, you know, review by council. And the town engineer who's here has been, worked on the description of the easement to ensure that it meets the town's requirements.
I guess my only real question is, because, because obviously I've spent enough time down that road throughout the years in the department, does this in fact settle everything for the people there? And is it true or not that even an adjoining suit will also be taken care of there that we won't get pulled into?
This is, this is, right. So basically, this is a full resolution of all matters. That was one thing. We were not going to settle this until all matters were settled. So as I mentioned, we were pulled in to the Beechcroft, Wheeler Beechcroft case, as well as the Wheeler versus Board of Selectmen case. So we had two cases that we were pulled into. We wanted to be sure that this ended all matters.
Is there an association case also down there?
That is resolved as well.
So that's also done? So this will settle it for all the neighbors there?
Global resolution of all matters.
Final.
And that had been submitted to the court, and they had given us 90 days to complete this transaction.
Okay.
But yes, it's putting everything, we no longer defend it in the other case to lay out a road. This is the limit. And that's where I said the value is, we basically are writing our own, you know, we are securing what we know and what we want and what we have.
And as far as we know, everyone is relatively happy with this.
Yeah, I mean, it's all been resolved, yes.
Okay.
I mean, you were, there were some members of the interior, the party members at the meeting last night, they attended the Board of Finance meeting, so they're aware and been following this.
I have a few questions on this one. Number one, the agreement for the sum that you're talking about, 200,000, was this court order?
No, this was not court order. This was, as I stated, it was part of a negotiation. That was one of the, when evaluating, you know, the settlement agreement and where we were, we did consider if we went even forward with the condemnation process, where we then, that it could, you know, depending on, there's two appraisals that are going to be submitted, and then you would have to do another, we don't know where the variance would come from.
So this is between the town of Branford and all of the residents that are on Crescent Bluff?
The, this is between, this transaction will take place between the town of Branford and the current property owner, Beechcroft LLC, who owns the grass area and the road. So we are, this is basically a land acquisition from the town with that party. There were other, part of this will happen is, we will then, the petition case that was brought against the town will be withdrawn, and, and the other cases that involve between the parties, the interior lot owners I'll refer to as, as well as the claim that you brought up with the association, that has all been resolved in part of this global resolution. But we're not party to that. I want to be clear about that.
All right. So that, so that has nothing to do with a court order or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay. We have been maintaining that road for decades for the rest of that. Does that road, has the town engineer or anyone from the engineering department inspected that road to see if it comes to the standards, just like what you did with number one with Cosgrove Court? Does that road come to the standards? Because I know in the damn near quarter-year, quarter-century that I served on the RTM, we A, never bought roads, nor did we buy property to put roads on, all right? Developers would build a road or however road came into whatever, and then it was deeded to the town. We didn't pay for them. And the thing is, the roads were up to specification, town specifications, before they were acquired. Has it been done? Has that been done?
So this, this road is predates, as we was talking, predates me or you, and I haven't been down there to really give it a payment condition index number, meaning...
So we have no idea what the future costs in the next few years are going to be on that?
No, but I would say that the condition of that road is in similar condition to other town roads that we have in that area. We haven't had many excavation permits in that area, but the ones that have come in, even when it's been unknown ownership, we have taken in the permits, we have made sure that the permanent patches were installed properly, that everything was done properly. So as far as managing the road, that's been no different than we have any other roads in that area. But again, you know, the actual physical condition of that road or the makeup of that road, it could be the same as, you know, Halsted, Lane, any of those roads that are in that area that we've taken at some point in time, you know, through, through the acceptance process, but I couldn't speak to the, the actual makeup of the road.
That, I think, is something that should be done. You do not have documentation here for yourself and Ray today? Do you have documentation to state all of what you've talked about? I mean, there's, there's, I've seen nothing here. I don't see any document that tells me what is being acquired, how it's being acquired, what's going into. I mean, these type of things are normally documented and are given to everybody before they're done. In all the years we did it, every time a road acquisition came in, a road appropriation or anything else like that, the documentation followed it completely. I've seen absolutely nothing for this. I understand it's been a long protracted case, but still just the same. You need to follow what's necessary. Because the other thing is, right now, you're opening Pandora's Box. A, we have never purchased a road. Now you've got Halsted, which is next door, which I understand is going to be the next one. Are we going to be buying that one too?
Well, again, getting to the point where we did the evaluation as far as both these cases we were brought into, it's important to note that the town always treated it as a town road prior to this situation. We often refer to that about this Crescent Bluff being argued for 100 years, right? But to be clear, that was really around the lawn area. Nobody was arguing about the road itself. It was always treated as a town road up until probably the current owner had bought it in, so maybe within the last 15 years. The, the town, as John said, had issued permits for road excavation. It was on our state road, our list for state road. We've received town aid for road funding. And again, after the change in administration and evaluating what we've done and speaking to department heads and those associated with the case, that they felt we never got the opportunity to make our case in terms of, in our claim of why this was a town road. So in your question about going out and purchasing it, I agree. We're not, we typically do not go out, and I don't even know if there has been a time where we've gone out and purchased a road. Typically, a developer will build it, build it to the specs, you know, and now we have current specs that they're required to build on before the acceptance. However, as you will know, and many of these people in this room, there are a number of town roads that are, do not meet the current road specs, because they predated this. These were, and again, that's not unique to Branford. That's probably across Connecticut, New England, and throughout the country, quite honestly. And again, the reason for us doing this is because we're, we are, yes, we could have continued to, to pursue it and appeal, and once you have to appeal a case, you're, it's at a higher standard to try to appeal that and get that overturned before you can make your case of why it's a town road. So there's an expense, a significant expense, and there's a risk to trying to do that. You may not get what you want. At the end of the day, we wanted to end the lawsuits, particularly the ones that the town has pulled into. We were doing this to end our, you know, financial exposure and also to secure what we have historically always felt was a town road and had treated as such. So that's why we're doing this, and that's why I think it's before, unfortunately, again, I'm not sure why the attorney Ted O'Hanlon, who's been representing and presented to the, presented the Board of Finance, represented the town throughout this case, is, is not here. But again, as I said, it's myself, Selectmen Dunbar, who need to vote on this and make the decision. I think Selectmen Dunbar's been, even when he was on the, as a representative, is aware of the limits, the road, and the ongoing cases and why we were moving forward with this proposal, to enter into negotiations with the current owner, and I believe was supportive of that. And that's where we are today. So we have an opportunity to put this to rest, to end the legal exposure and financial burden on the taxpayers, and to basically put, you know, limits on what we really wanted and what we'd have. This question about other lawsuits coming forward or what we were put into, no, that is now put to bed.
I think it's the end of a longstanding dispute that, unfortunately, absent doing this, and I'm not thrilled with doing it either, but I think under the circumstances, for as long as it's been going on, for as much money as we have spent, all the taxpayers of Branford for this one area, it's almost like cutting our losses by paying the 200, getting it solved, giving the people there peace of mind and moving on. And I, I guess I'll take it on this side now as a learning experience to watch what we would get ourselves involved in. So it's not, it's not ideal, but I think at this point in time, it's best for the town, and in my understanding, there's a lot of support on the RTM to see that this happens for the people there, and for that reason, I will vote for it.
All right. So is that a motion?
That's a motion.
All right. I second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Ray. Item six, to consider and if appropriate, terminate the remaining options on the Thimble Island Refuge and Collection Contract with Coastal Tide Marine Services. This is the garbage and recycling collection out at Thimble Islands. This is actually tied into item seven, but just to give a brief overview, Coastal Tide was awarded the contract for the collection services. However, last year, they had ended up engaging in with the Thimble Island Ferry Company to actually use their resources and collect the trash and the recycling. And they had then come to us and asked if we would assign the contract, allow them the ability to assign the contract, the remaining two years, to Thimble Island Ferry. However, that, you know, looking at the current contract plus what was being proposed, we thought the best course of action would to just terminate the contract with the current contract holder, Coastal Marine, and then get into item seven, that's where we would waive the bid and award the two-year contract to Thimble Island. The, as I mentioned, took over the service last year. I will say, last year, their record has been, you know, pretty good. They've met their obligation. There has been a drop. I don't think we had any complaints throughout the year. And certainly Trista would hear if we did, the phone calls come in. So they've been a very responsive company. I think the value of this contract is 12,675. So it's $175 over our bid threshold. But with that, I'll first put it in the form of a motion, item six, to consider and if appropriate, terminate the remaining options of Thimble Island's Refuge and Collection Contract with Coastal Tide Marine and Services.
I'll move it.
All right. Second, any discussion? Hearing now all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item seven, to consider and appropriate waive the bid for the Thimble Island Refuge and Collection Contract and award the remaining two-year, two one-year extensions to Thimble Island Ferry Company LLC under the same terms and conditions as the previous contract between the town of Branford and Coastal Tide Marine Services LLC.
I'll move it for comment.
Okay. So it's been moved. I'll second it. Discussion?
I mean, for the record, I mean, most people that know me are, I'm not real big on bid waivers, so I thank Trista for getting me the information so I could look in and make a decent decision. I did reach out to a representative from the islands, which we know sometimes, you know, they're, they have a hard time getting decent services, and my understanding is not one complaint, just like you heard. They're extremely happy with it. But I also reached out to some people that did it in the past to make sure they were all happy with, you know, moving forward, no opportunities. The ones I spoke to said, yeah, we're done with that stuff. So I think we have, this is definitely in the best interest of the town to move forward this. Yeah. Thank you.
Just for the record too, I'd just like to point out that the previous contract before this was actually $14,500 in the last year of that five-year contract as well. So this is even less than it was.
Three years, yeah, four years ago. So good point.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing now all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To consider and appropriate approve recommendations by the Solid Waste Management Commission to continue Branford's participation in the Haz Waste Central Program for additional three years. This item will be referred to the RTM for legislative approval. So the Holloway, I'm sorry, Haz Waste Central is run, Regional Water Authority? That's where we, yes?
Yeah, I'll move it.
All right. Move, second discussion. Hearing now all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item nine, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Nancy Cohen Activities Coordinator for the exemption as permitted by section 115-4 of the Code of the Town of Branford regarding the consumption... Branford regarding the consumption of alcoholic beverages in a public area and allow the serving of beer and wine at a dinner party scheduled March 10, 2020. Put that forward in the form of a motion.
I'll move it. Where's this at?
This is at the community, Canoe Brook, community, our second floor, in their kitchen.
Yep, thanks.
Discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Green use application, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the National Association of Letter Carriers, branch 19, for the use of the town green on February, Friday, May 8, 2020, at 10:00 a.m., to hold the annual food drive kickoff.
Move it.
Move. Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Branford Parks and Recreation Department for the use of the town green on Thursday evenings from July 2, 2020, through August 27, 2020, to hold the annual jazz concert series.
I'll move it.
Move. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve the request from Tabor Blues Jam for the use of the town green on June 6, July 4, August 1, 2020, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and September 12, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I'll move it.
Move. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve a request from Legacy Theater for the use of the rear of the town green from August 4 through August 9, 2020, to hold performance of our town at 7:00 p.m., except Thursday, August 6, would be a matinee performance.
Move it.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve a request from MAD for the use of the town green on Saturday, October 3, 2020, from 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., to hold the annual Walk Like MAD event.
Move it.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reappointments, Human Services Board, John Mooney, Elizabeth Haas, and William Keen, terms to expire December 31, 2022.
Move it.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appointments, Board of Assessment Appeals, Lou Siegel to fill a vacancy left by Ali Abalua, term to expire November 16, 2021.
Move it.
Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board of Assessment Appeals, alternate Kevin Coons.
Move it.
Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Human Services Board, Mary Grande to fill a vacancy left by Edward Map, term to expire December 31, 2020.
Move it.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Inlands Wetlands Commission, Clarice Beejman to fill a vacancy left by Mark June Wells, term to expire May 31, 2023, and Stephen Solomon to fill a vacancy left by James Goggins, term to expire May 31, 2021. I'll take it.
Move it.
Second, hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Correspondence. I'll just quickly read this with the concern of the coronavirus that is going out there. The town of Branford is working closely with the East Shore Health District, federal, state, and healthcare providers to monitor the 2019 coronavirus, COVID-19. Currently, there is no significant risk to the Branford residents. While the immediate risk of this new virus to our community is low at this time, everyone should use these practices to keep themselves safe. Wash hands, often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. If soap and water are not available, use alcohol-based sanitizer. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home when you are sick. Children should stay home from school or daycare if they are sick. Cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue, then through, throw the tissue in the trash. Clean and disinfect frequently touched objects and surfaces. Call ahead before visiting your doctor if you have a fever and symptoms of respiratory illness, such as cough or difficulty breathing. Residents and businesses should create a plan to address the possibility of COVID-19 becoming widespread in the community. We are encouraging residents to be prepared as if it was a pending storm emergency, in meaning, you know, have your, any medication and other supplies as needed if you can't get out of the house. I encourage everyone to visit the CDC website at cdc.gov, click on the Coronavirus 2019, to find the latest information, including information on emergency planning. Any questions or concerns should be addressed by contacting East Shore District Health Department. Their number is 203-481-4233. Thanks. Any other business?
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Okay. With that, motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.